What happened, they plugged up? Yeah, we don't know what happened to them, but they plugged up, they removed them, and we got them on order. We were supposed to have them Friday, we could start injecting phosphate again, and that will help as well.
They called me today, and he said they should get his office today, not have it be tomorrow, that they come in today.
So...
If they do come in tomorrow, I'll be at the office.
Once we get this water treatment plant in though, that's gonna take care of a lot of these issues. We can treat that water as it leaves that plant. Okay? Yes?
I have a question. How is the boil order notification sent out to all the people? Because there's been many, many days that we don't know there's a boil order, we're drinking this water and it's bad.
Well, a lot of times if we're on a boil order, it may not affect the whole system, it may just be parts of the system. And I've not spoke to anybody, but when I was a teacher at the school corporation, one of the things that they had there that was very valuable, when they had issues with the school, you know, any type of threats, anything like that, they used a reverse, and I know 911 does that too, for tornadoes, they do a reverse dial. I have no idea what that system costs, but that might be something that we look at, so when we're on a boil order, we can do a reverse call to everybody in the system, and just say, hey, we're on a boil order. Because I agree, it's tough. We try to do everything that we're supposed, we do, is something that we're supposed to do as part of the notification. Becky, what does that consist of? We have to post it, what, on a boil order?
Usually a public notice, and then two consecutive tests, 24 hours of work.
Right, so we post it like where, the bank and...
Pretty around public media, television, radio.
Is that what you...
The WTA does a good job.
But a lot of us is at work, and we don't hear the radio, or we don't see the TV.
Well, if you do a reverse call, a lot of people don't have home phones.
Right.
Yeah, and we're running, you know, I work at a gas station, we're having fountain drinks and coffee and all, which I know the coffee would be fine, but fountain drinks, you know? We don't want to make anybody sick.
No.
And then what, there's four or five restaurants here in West Terre Haute, they can't, we can't get a phone call. When I call down here and ask them about boil order, they said, no, there's not one. And then somebody comes in and shows me it's in the paper. Well, that's out of our district where it's at, but then, next time I call down here, they say there's not a boil order, and then I hear from one of the waterworks guys, there is a boil order.
Now, that just depends on where the leak is, and where, what areas are affected. If it's out the county, then it's, anybody inside the city limits wouldn't be on a boil order.
But could, like, the gas stations, subway, you know, the restaurants get called, you know, because, like I said, we're at work, we're not listening to the radio and all, but we need to be notified for our customers.
Nobody likes it when we raise the rate. Now, if you wanted that, that's fine, but you're gonna have to add another half person in the office to be conscious. Because, you know, it just, it just takes a lot of time.
To call the gas stations and the restaurants here in West Terre Haute?
You do that, and then here's the office thing. People like my wife that are homeless, that have to live in a house, if you don't call them, then they're gonna be complaining. And if you don't call the landlords, they're gonna be complaining. So you need to try to go to one of these reversal things, and Scott's talking about it, or it is, it's yourself, and then if you go to reversal thing, people don't have telephones, and that's our luck. But right now, the girls email the local media immediately, soon as they have, and then when they get a clearance, they email them again, say boil order is over. That's what we do. Now, if you want more than that done, that's fine, we can do more than that, but it's gonna cost money. And when it costs money, then don't come complaining about the ratings.
There have been times after hours when I've had brown water, and I've called the office, and it tells me nothing. Wouldn't that be a cheap, Jim, logical way to put it on the answering machine, perhaps?
Brown water isn't boil order. A boil order is when you have a break in the main.
Well, couldn't you put on there, there's been a break in the main at 7th block?
You didn't get the coronation right. A boil order is when you have a lack of pressure, when you get 20% of pressure, you have to use your boil.
What happens is, when the pressure drops below a certain, you know, some of the bacteria in it, so...
But what she's saying is, isn't that something that you put on?
Yeah, isn't that something, you put on an answering machine, your answering machine, rather than call back during business hours? Well, I'm trying to take a shower after business hours, sorry.
And these are all good ideas, we'll look at it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion, it's very easy and expensive to do a mass email, where you actually can just print up the boil order, and send it out to everybody that subscribes to the email address. Very quick idea.
And once again, we gotta have somebody to have to have a hold of emails on, same way with callback, I mean, most everyone now, they have cell phones, so, I mean, it's the same thing, we get some type of contact number, but it's gonna take, it's gonna get that system, like...
Scott, she comes out for hours, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, you know, are we gonna call in one of the office scouts to come in to send that email, or start calling everyone? Where is someone else looking for this type of case, that needs everybody to know, having that, like Scott was saying, it's all gonna need finance. So that's what you're wanting us to look at, and is that money spent, or is it just placed elsewhere, what we're selling?
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for John Wilk, or Eric Smith, or Pat Callahan? Because we're just, we're gonna go into the regular meeting, pay our bills, and be done.
Well, how long have we been on boil order?
Been on boil order now?
I don't remember, yes, we are on boil order, and it was, first, it was just for Lockhart and Ben Flan, and 40,000, and 500,000, and then it went down, and we were still on boil order. I think a couple of people came over, they told us, that we cannot go off of that boil order, and I got two clear samples. I got the California one today, and I got the second one today, so when I get it out tomorrow, if it's clear, then the boil order will be lifted, and not until...
You have that for samples, and...
Yes, if it comes, and we find out that our water problems are all falling back to this whole massive jump over here, is there any way the town can sue the park department or something, because of what they've done to our town?
No, we sue. You have to have causation, you know, we have to, we have to deal with, you know, who's responsible for so many issues over there, that it's gonna be a long, drawn-out, incredibly expensive, because you're gonna have to hire countless experts. I mean, is it possible, in theory, yes, but, I mean, you're...
Why are you sticking to shame, if our water problems here in town all fall back to this thing? When we're getting nothing out of this?
Because then you're always gonna have, you know, a question of whether or not, you know, is it an act of God, or something bad affect in relationship to just the regular business? There's so many possible issues, but first and foremost, we naturally, essentially, try and prove, like, you know, experts, that that was indeed reasonable, which is difficult, very difficult.
Okay, I just called over to meet the town, I've read the financial problem, I need an approval, and...
Jim, the financial report, Lee?
Financial report, you got three, you got one, and you got one that they ran in their report, and one is the appropriations. And then through the second, very important, financial report for the year, because they helped with the 2016 budget. And if you look at your income and experience of your general fund, they're both overstated by $140,000, in reason to that, if you borrow $70,000 from your current fund during the year. The most important thing to look at is, we started the year with $97,733, which is less than two months' working downs, and anyone pays, you can't operate now, on less than two months' working downs. We ended June 30th with $121,443, so we have improved that situation a little bit, but not enough to pat ourselves on the back. In your, and the, one thing I'd like to throw your attention to is the Fund 132, that's Local Law Enforcement, Education, and we have always got checks from the county every year in June, as our share of the court costs and everything. This year, we did not get a check from them, and so we're looking at probably $70,000 or more, money that we didn't get, that we planned on getting. Local law enforcement is the money we use for police to go to the academy, to go to all their training stations, for their education, and also, we help buy new cars out of that fund. And next year, I won't be here, but if they don't get that money from the county, it's gonna be considerable less for education, and considerable less for equipment or police cars, or police. So, I don't know quite what the problem is, but they've always sent it to us, and they assume much gets up, and you're always gonna get it, but we're not getting it this time. And our local road and street, we've got $20,573.44, and then our motor vehicle highway fund, we've got $110,792.89.
Okay, thank you, Jim, I need a motion to accept financial report.
Make a motion to accept your financial report this year.
Seconded that motion.
Hold it there.
Scott, may I say something here? I know you're in a very busy, we have a gentleman here, from out of town, that's trying to get your attention to talk about the huff house down there, and he has some things to say, and I think it's rude that we don't let him talk.
No, we've said our piece.
You have?
Yes, yeah, it was just the proposal.
Well, all I wanted to let you know is, we do have a proposal, we do not have a proposal to remove the roof, but we do have a proposal to evaluate the flood pump. That is, there's a copy that Bob has, Roger has it, and we've got three or four extra copies here, we'd be glad to give to the board. I just didn't want an opportunity, if somebody does want to ask some questions, you know, we're a little bit of a ways off, I mean, we could come back sometime, but we're here now, and...
Right, well, and the reason why I was waiting is, we can't make a decision in town unless it's under storm. So, that's, but, if you have a proposal, if you want to just present that to us, and we'll look at it, we probably won't make a decision on it until...
Sure, sure, no, that's fine.
Until they have an opportunity to look at it.
We're not looking for an answer.
Okay, all right, sounds good, and then you guys can take it on back. Okay, thank you.
Obviously, you know, again, I will just throw it open, if you have any questions or anything, you've got phone numbers there, you know, give us a call.
Okay, thank you.
Glad to answer them. Thank you.
Drive safe.
Thank you, Scott.
Jim, have you heard anything back on...
Duke Energy sent me an email, promised me they'd give me the report, promised me that they'd be here several months ago with the insurance report. I don't know if the man died, or what happened, but communication was completely stumped. All the facts in front of us, how much money we need to, to stand to get the street lighting proposal going, that's what LED lights for the street lighting, all the town, and it comes to a complete stop.
Okay, I'll make a call with Rick Burger, and see whether he can find out on that. Maybe they just, the students are programmed or something, but, right here's another issue, guys, where we've been working on this for how long, Jim?
Better than a year.
Yeah, and, once again, we're waiting on Duke Energy to respond to us. So it looks like we're not doing anything, and the ball's in their court. So we're ever trying to get new street lighting throughout the whole town, and we can't get a response.
And with the new street lighting, it would cost the town less, we're switching over to, to, only lights, because it lasts longer and uses less energy.
Rob, I need you to get one Jared on the specs for...
I talked to him. He's, I've indicated, I think we need some more specifications for those cave project, and I talked to Rob about this, he'll get a course, and we'll get it.
Okay, great, great.
And as long as I get something, everybody can fit up, and bid on it.
We only have one person that can bid on it, right?
We only have one person in private counsel.
I know, Rob, but you gotta, you gotta do it right, or you're gonna have to take word down our throats, because we didn't do it right.
Right, I agree.
So we gotta tell them how fix the...
What we're removing, how much we're putting down, and factions will be...
That was...
Part of it, I know, well, we'll just get what we have, and we'll be able to talk about, make sure we do check about this. Is that one of the solve or different, or is it all the same basically?
Thanks. Jared, do you have a report on the weed ordinance track?
Yeah, I've actually been into discussions with the county attorneys, and try and see if, right now, the way that their county ordinance is adopted essentially works in unincorporated areas of Vigo County, so obviously, Nottero City, West Terre Haute, the town area. And so I'm kind of meeting with them, or attempting to be with them, to discuss the possibility of allowing them to control some of the weeds, or enter into some kind of, you know, governmental contract, to see what options are there, so we can get that.
Well, my idea on that was, we've got a balance in track. We're not gonna be throwing money away, but if, we, last summer, we had some residents come time to time, complaining about next door neighbor not having their grass, and their weeds. You clean up their mess, they've abandoned the house or something. Well, if I can get the legal work done, we could pay for that, if it's legal, out of trash, and then file a lien, we give them like two weeks, or whatever the jurisdiction says, to pay us. If they don't pay us, then we file a lien. So we satisfied the state board accounts, and we got a shot at satisfying the neighbors that we've, we've been something. But I gotta, I gotta get the okay, the legal okay to do it.
Right, I think the easiest way right now is not to, number one. If, if the, if it breaks down, we're not an option to go to the county, and, you know, have them kind of review that, if it's not an option for us to enter something with them, that I definitely think is important for us to look at, just to help resolve the issue, but, and that proposal will be the people attempting to, whether it's manpower from us that pays for it, whether we have the contract with somebody to go on and do it, and it just involves town resources, town people, has more town vulnerability, and we may be able to circumvent all that if we can enter some kind of, inner governmental agreement with the county, with the, but I, that's one way to...
If we're not gonna do that, then I'd like to hand to the town council that you reduce the trash rates by at least $2. Because there's no use building up money in the trash fund, if we can't spend it on the landfill.
There's no use in that building up money in the trash fund, that's not, that didn't come to fit there. Why can't we just kind of put the citizens in extra development, or something like that?
That's what I thought you wanted us to say, because, not to interrupt anybody, I'm kind of a trashy person, I have a lot of trash, and I feel it's not that one little tiny can of, which is not little, but a whole lot of trash was coming. Then you want to come a little snicker on your barrel, because you're overflowing a little bit.
What they want you to do is call...
I'm gonna call them, and I know better, because I stuff a few extra.
Okay, what?
I clean my yard, I clean the streets, I throw all that stuff that's, and I put it in a bag, and I do it right. But you know, I clean my yard all the time when I clean, I clean the streets, and this little one barrel a week is not doing it. Okay, or another barrel.
I pay one time for 30, I mean, it's 3250, and then you got two barrels.
I know, I pay two barrels for 350.
That's where the contract's written.
I mean, I understand, but you know, I clean my yard, and I, and everybody else is...
I drag it, I drag it from all the yard.
I pack, I pack everybody in that, there's avenue, trash in line.
And it's no fun dragging it from the mud.
No.
But, I'll have to say, you know, I'm glad I have it.
I am too.
It's made a big difference in my day, I can tell you.
But I mean, I know...
People before, they weren't using, or no...
It's absolutely everybody, it's mattresses, chairs, you know, we have to clean up all the time, you know, the last few years, you guys have the big dusters, they're like 150 and 170, that was really nice.
They have to clean up this year, and after they clean up the others, then they throw up the town center, and then threw it, and then they threw it around the ground, and it's not the people in town, it's the rural people, they're part of brushing, and...
That's right, I said, yeah.
And, you know, the rural people aren't paying for the service, so if we're not gonna provide something for the town, I don't think we should be being charged $14.
That wouldn't necessarily be true, if you're on the water service, you can opt for the trash service, which I do with some of my property, so rural people, you pay for part of that service.
Yeah, now, but nationally, they did, but that's where the, the comes out people that come in and...
Okay, yeah, um, what do you have on the...
I guess, we're really in trouble, so we see what, what you wrote, what you wrote on it. I'm just saying, I think it's something that we should look into, you know, entering into some kind of agreement.
I would say, I want to see both sides of it.
I mean, but, I mean, I just think it's a lot simpler than trying to allocate money from one fund to a different fund, that have to pay back another fund, satisfy state board of the town.
We're gonna shell purge it, provide it.
I don't see why we couldn't, still, I'll, I'm saying, I mean, that, that is the direct...
Referring to the weed order.
No, I thought we pointed that correct.
I think we should take into advisement, let Jared figure out what he can find out, and we'll, Jared wants us for the town.
Good. Employee handbook, we have a updated job description for utility superintendent, is that what you're in regards to?
We do have, the job description is accurate, I included on the last page, just an insert from what another town person had, which is just kind of a characterization, that I wasn't comfortable filling out. So that was included on purpose, but we have to construct it for purposes of Bob's, as far as just a checklist for Bob. And I just included that for purposes, so that can have something to look at and modify from a perspective. I did the job description, the basic function, the individual functions, which we kind of did with our last job description, and provided to Bob. As far as, you know, what education, what experience, all that information, I wasn't comfortable filling out, because I had no information on it, and so we'll have to change that last page to reflect what Bob, or what the town wants, in relationship to Bob, as well as what the duties are, as far as the physical demands, and that sort of thing. So, first two pages are completely accurate, but I, well, I believe they are, you'll want to put your assistant draft form, and the last page, we'll all need somebody to either tell me what to put in there, or to fill in themselves.
And reference the handbook is that we need water utility, water superintendent, taken out, and put town utility in all those places, and then also reflect any changes you guys want, and get the handbook approved. But right now, it's not approved, because we don't have water superintendent.
Okay, so who does that?
I'm not smart.
Change utility superintendent for water superintendent?
And all ramifications of it. And right, and the streets is a ten, that's where we're acting, and then is the street workers own the jurisdiction of the town utility, and if that's correct, then that needs to be reviewed by the board.
So, we have somebody from the ward there, so that we can... Okay, Jared and I will try to get the next couple. Okay, all right, thank you. Keith Melton, report?
A couple of quick guestways pesting out for the council. As far as the boil orders goes, as far as I understand, the Wester Police Department's the only entity that has a social media outlet, we do have a Facebook page, and anytime there's a boil order, there's any information you want to get out to the public, we will be willing to post it, and so it doesn't cost us anything for it, and so just, you can give me a call, I answer my phone 24 hours a day anyway, so... Yeah, so, we both want it to sit, and the one is lifted, so, I mean, primarily, this is due law enforcement related news, but I noticed, I mean, some of our posts, they get shared at times, that within two or three hours, you've got 20, 30,000 views, that particular post, and so we can try to get that attention. I know, there's quite a few people in town that follow us, so we can try to get that attention. Yeah, and if you call me, or if you're, always I call you. There you go, I was there with 3:00 in the morning, you called me, I posted up there, the way you shared inside information, I'm pretty fast, so. Also, with the local enforcement, the education fund, Mr. Manhattan talked to me about that, and I did contact her, the Vigo County auditor, they said that the auditor told you to resume it to something else, we're still waiting, July 13. We also just got some papers from State Department in February, they just talked to me, everything just sort of, you can share it. As far as the police department's concerned, in June, we took 410 calls, that averages up to 13.6 calls per day. Of those, 49 were made since criminal case reports, we did 295 criminal case reports to date. I won't be able to get our calls for service to date, just switch the services between them, and we had a time period where we were kind of going off without home services or whatever, so hopefully we can resume that in 2016. Department made five felony arrests, 12 misdemeanor arrests, or 22 infraction citations, there were not any ordinance citations, however, under the written warning, all of those were for ordinance charges. Took five veteran vehicle crash reports, 32 cases, we're open for criminal investigations, five of which are still open as of July, before were opened prior to June. CID issued four warrants, our reserves, which we've really dropped down in numbers, with the volunteers we've had, they were able to still put in 157 hours, at the department in June, with the top officer, Graham Davis, for 47, 5 hours. Reserve patrol, Dave Todd, with 38 hours, and reserve patrol, Andrew Thomas, for 35 hours. Good news is, we did bring on three new reserves, we ended up taking five into training, one of which had resigned, we've got state, the other one, of course, I'm gonna cast the training, that the state needed to put on. So we do have three new reserve officers with us, in fact, one of which is standing there in the corner, and the other one's right along the other row, officer training, so before he's starting. I'm, when I get to that. In June, we did three trainings within the department, first one made a patrol rifle qualifications, that was for full-time officers. We want to thank the Vermillion County Sheriff's Office for helping us out, basically, they did the training for free for us, and we're setting the instructor to do CPR needs, and room, also, we joined in with Vigo County Sheriff's Office, and doing pistol qualifications, that is required by state statute, for all of our officers to qualify on the handguns. We also brought a guest instructor, in free charge, from the Indiana State Excise Police, who does standard ice field training, that would set up a certain amount of groundwork, and we had several of our senior officers, and new officers participate in that. And going on to the new reserve officer process, so that's Officer Stephen Redmond, he was sworn in along with Officers Delcy Merrill and Officers Charles Cummings on June 29th, so just a few weeks ago. And they've been in training since March? March, and they had about a six month hiring process before then. So they're done with their classroom stuff, as you can see, they're sworn in, they're in uniform, and they are now starting their 440 hour field training officer program, where they're riding with senior veteran officers that have been certified as field trainers. So it's still gonna be quite a while before they're even charged by themselves, but glad to have the new reserve officers on board, like I said, it really helps us out, and puts a benefit to us, but doesn't cost us anything. Some of the other information we did for June, Officer Caleb Telvis did, get invited to go down to... I know our guys look forward to it, in fact, I kind of have to tell people more than I tell them, yes, just gonna have to make sure the schedule's covered. So, other than that, that's all I have from June. Just to let everybody in the town know, I noticed, probably at mid-June and continue on even through today, our burglary rates have just skyrocketed. People are breaking into building residences and commercial buildings. So what I ask everybody that lives in town is, keep an eye on your property and your neighbor's property. If you see anything out of the ordinary, call us, I don't care if it's just a shadow in the night at 3:00 in the morning, if it's something where you think it's unusual, you know, you guys know your property and your neighbors better than any of us ever will. And so if something seems out of place, call us and let us know. I don't care if you call us 20 times a night, that's what we're here for. Again, our burglary rates have just skyrocketed lately, and our criminal mischief rates, where people are breaking windows, pouring gas on, that's still increasing as well, but the burglary rates get very high. Any questions I can briefly answer with the town?
Hey, isn't there a curfew still goes on in Westerhove?
The curfew was ruled unconstitutional in Indiana.
Because we see three, you know, agents from three to four, three on that, at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, at the gas station, by their cells, getting popped.
Call us, we can still, especially the person under 18, which according to the curfew would apply. Although we can't make an enforcement action on it, because there's so many exceptions to the law, and basically, the courts have ruled unconstitutional. They revamped the England on it, on the statute, but there's still no court cases phoned up. We can still contact the parents, to make sure the parents know these kids are out. And nine times out of 10, mom and dad are gonna be mad that they're
But we can't hold them at the station, you know?
Well, call us.
You're saying burglary is
Yes.
We don't get a place on the state of town, we're working.
Well, it's been so busy lately, they've been called to go, you know, toad hog up on, you know, Ferguson Hill, Marion Heights, before, for some emergency calls. Unfortunately, the Vigo County Sheriff's Office is stretched thin. They typically run one deputy to the side of the river, and that's presuming that they're not busy, and he doesn't have to go up to North Terre Haute, or down to Black Hawk, or Lewis. And if there's a domestic, a violent crime going on, you know, on Smith Place, like we had last night, and we could be there 10 minutes before any other law enforcement officer, and dispatch is gonna send us. That's how I got it. Going back to, and I've talked to you before about it, though, Gary, and if you see any issues, I know there was an officer that was a random radar slotted out of town, and he's not done that since I've had a conversation with him, so, there's limitations to it.
But how about sitting in